First of all, thank you for being here. We're appreciative of your time this afternoon. My name is Amun Chavez. I'm the newest Assistant City Manager with the City of Laredo. So I can appreciate seeing everybody here and understanding what the industry brings to the city. And seeing everybody here, I can tell and I know the importance of the Building Department as it relates to permits. And so that's going to be part of the discussion today. And before I continue, I just want to recognize our Council Number for District 4, Ray Garcia. Council Number, welcome. And so as under this new role, which I've been here, I think, four weeks, part of the idea is now bringing in these departments, which I will be overseeing, which most of them, if not all of them, are related to the industry, right? Whether it be permits or developments. And so that's part of the idea coming in here. And I know I have a big task, but I'm confident enough that I will be successful. And of course, we're going to need your input because we value what you bring to the table. And so we are currently undergoing some structural changes within not only this department, but others. So I would just ask you to bear with us. And we're working on that restructuring for the benefit of all this, which at the end of the day, it comes down to the development process, the building permit process, so we can be successful, so we can continue seeing our city grow. I've been in this since 2005 when I started with the City of Laredo, at different capacities, different levels, even as a Building Department Director at one point. And so I haven't seen this stop at any time. This has been something that's been continuously grown. And so we want to make sure that we provide that customer service that you all deserve. And so that's an mentality that I come in with under this new leadership and this opportunity, to make sure that the customer service is there. That's going to be one of my priorities, walking in here and making sure that you get that service that you deserve, make sure that your permits get out on time. And of course, we know we have these requirements and other things that we ask for, but as part of it, we're going to work with everybody to try to continue moving forward. I know we have a lot of staff members, even from other departments here, and that's part of that coalition that we're trying to bring together. And it's going to be very important. And we'll get into some of those things as we move on. But from my perspective, and for those of you that know me, I'm the type of person that I don't want to make things more difficult than what they are already, but rather try to be efficient and bring in productivity so we can improve in our system. As part of all this, I also want to mention that through the Harvard Bloomberg Initiative, the mayor recently had to select a certain project for the City of Laredo to move forward. And so the mayor, along with our two additional Assistant City Managers, Mr. Jose Valdez Jr. and Steve Landin, the mayor selected the permitting process to be the project. And so that's something that we're currently meeting on a weekly basis with other cities. And we're putting a plan together that we plan to roll out sometime in the summer. Okay? And so all that information will be part of this growing pains, if you want to call, so that at the end of the day, we provide to that service again that you need as efficiently as possible. So I wanted to bring that up because I think it's important when I'm coming in here as the newest Assistant City Manager, and they already brought me into that conversation with my expertise. And so seeing the mayor select that as a project, we can see the importance. And this is just proof of it. The importance of the industry and what this brings to the table for our citizens and the community as a whole. So again, I wanted to make that available. A lot of you know where to find me. And so it's important that we continue that communication. We're going to try to continue having these town hall meetings. We don't want to keep everybody here for a long time. But I also want to make sure that you see some improvement, okay, from ours. It'd be not efficient if we keep on meeting and you don't see improvement. That would be something that I hope that will not happen. Again, the main idea is to get your feedback, work on it, and see that turnaround that you're supposed to see throughout our process. So I will begin with that. I know also that we have a new building official, as a couple of weeks ago. And I'll introduce her, Alejandro Martinez, who is working hand in hand with a lot of you already. Okay? And these are some of the things that we will be focusing and working on as we move forward. Again, the idea is to provide that customer service that responds in a timely manner so that you can continue with your projects. And we'll work on some things if there's... I don't know how long we're going to be able to meet here. I don't want to make it as long as possible, but I want to do hit some key points that we're going to go over. And then we'll open it up for questions after that and see how you can also provide us some feedback if you feel that we need to work on certain things. But if I look around from the city side, I mean, I do see economic development, I do see engineering, we have the fire department, we have planning building. So again, these are things that we will continue working on. And I see some good positive things moving forward. Part of the idea again is I want to bring all of these components together so that we can make it more efficient. So that's part of the plan moving forward. And I appreciate you and thank you for your time this afternoon. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Blanca Sanchez, Operations Manager of the Building Division. I'd like to welcome you to our town hall meeting. This is a valuable opportunity for us to come together to share the permitting and TCO process we'll be going through each division, the new requirements for the residential plan review, upcoming ordinance amendments that we're working on, and to discuss flyers that they were handing out to you when you signed in. Please feel free to engage in the presentation at any time. And I will now be handing it over to Miriam to go over the residential permitting process.
We're just going to fix some technical issues with the presentation. The afternoon, Alejandro Martinez, just please give us one. Yes.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Miriam Villarreal from the Residential Plan Review area. I'm going to be explaining the residential permits for new residents first. First, you need to send the application via email to that email over there. That email over there is on the flyer you have from the residential. After that, the pre-screen coordinator will check the drawings and the application, if everything is filled and properly signed in and everything. And the coordinator will send a login for you to upload the drawings and all the documents you need for the new residence. Once everything is complete, you need to pay the plan review fee and the technology fee before going to the plan review examiner. Once it is paid, start the plan review process where we check all the plans. In the... Some papers, the residential checklist you have in your table. There is the minimal requirement for the plan review residential. And after everything, if there is correction, we send the correction by the system. And then if there's no correction, it will be just approve the plans and then you get your permit. If not, there will be correction. And in the same system, you're going to send the correction back until everything is filled correctly.
The next one.
Okay. This is not for new residences. This is just for block fences, pergolas, palapas addition, remodels, repairs, and demolitions. This is go through the same email, but it's not going to go through the ABEL system, just through email. The mobile home installations and the irrigation permits, they need a licensed irrigator or a licensed mobile home installer for both. You send the application with all the plans you need for, depends the case. You... Before you go into the plan review, you have to pay the plan review fee and the technology fee, like here. It takes two or three days for review. And the permits can be released if you go to the office and you can take your permit or you can send it to email. I'm going to pass the microphone to Commercial Area.
Before we continue, any questions on the residential? What may have...
Can you... Time, like how long did it take as part of those steps? No, my question is, I mean, I know that on the first slide, it has a process, but is there a time from submission to receiving the permit?
They were saying two to three days. And I wanted to ask if you all see that maybe that's the case or is that not the case?
Two to three days for residential or for block fences?
I don't know.
You said block fences.
I'm sorry. The question is from start to end, all the time?
On new permits.
For new homes, right?
Yeah, for new homes. Right now, we don't have exactly the time for each stage, but we can look for, establish a timeframe for one stage to the other. And we can let you know.
Can I ask you a question? Are we still using the land development code that identifies how many days you have before you have to turn over completed applications and permits?
That has to be included.
Is it 20 days unless it's been changed?
Right.
Has that been changed?
No, it hasn't been.
No.
Okay, well, then there's 20 days. That's what you got to back under the land development code.
So in an average, what would be your estimate that we approve a residential permit? Maybe Alejandro, maybe you can answer that.
Yes. Good afternoon. Well, basically, it's because the ABEL projects that are processed for residential and commercial, remember that there are two phases. One is for the pre-screen review and the other one is a plan review. So at the time of the submission, that's the time that the application starts being reviewed, but sometimes it's not complete. So the plan review starts when the plan reviewers are assigned for both residential and commercial. So we highly recommend you like to have everything complete and signed before making the application through the ABEL. And that way, we can reduce and improve our timeframe for you. As you mentioned, the land development code states that they have to be reviewed within 21 days. So we're trying our best. The ABEL system allows between five to 10 business days. And it's a coordination, like for commercial, we have several divisions and we try to coordinate and have everything on time. So we make weekly follow-ups with all the divisions, all the pending tasks or the expired tasks. If any staff is out of the office, we try to resolve it. And also for residential, we only have assigned the right-of-way and the residential project, the residential staff, but we don't get more than 21 days for review. So we highly recommend you, if you need training, if you want to schedule previous meetings with us, just to check your projects, like preliminary, or we're also, remember, offering pre-development meetings. We're always open to help you to coordinate any questions that you have, only with us or with other divisions, like utilities or engineering. You're always welcome to our office. So that's the timeframe, enable five to 10 business days and per land development code, 21 business days. Do you have any more questions?
The last time we had a meeting with Mr. Hinkle, and he was saying that a lot of people were not getting building permits. And I asked him, do you have a list of what requires a building permit?
The requirements are different according to the scope of work. There are several kinds of permits. So if we follow the code, there are 1,000 pages per code, like for building, for electrical, for fire. So we try to summarize the ones that...
Alejandro, do we have a list of what requires a permit?
Well, those lists are at the back. We have a summarized list of the most important and basic requirements for each type of permit. Yes. That's like a general checklist.
Really, we have some of that FAQs. We can ask questions on our website.
Yes.
When a permit is required? Because I know a lot of that has always come up and people not knowing and not understanding that they require a permit for certain things.
Yeah, and we're also going to upload the checklist for each type of permit, for residential and commercial. So we're trying to educate our community so they can know before submitting what they have to submit, all the requirements, so that way we can also reduce the time for the review.
I want to talk to Rizan. Go ahead.
I had a question. Number one, you guys, when you're reviewing the permits, do you have two lanes? And I talk about two lanes from the standpoint of a brand-new plan that we've never built before and a repeat plan to expedite the process. Is that in place today?
For residential?
Yes.
Okay. For the residential projects, currently, we process the repairs by email. And the new projects or new construction are through ABEL.
No, but he's talking about... Yeah. When you have like a cookie cutter, right? When you have like a cookie cutter permit that it's the same home that's going to be built on this block, is there like a process that we just submit one? And understanding that the rest of the block is going to be the same?
Yeah. So where you, instead of checking, you know, 15 items on the plan?
Yeah.
You're going to check the site plan, you're going to check the AC?
Like a model. You have a prototype.
Yes. Whenever you have a prototype for residential, just let us know in your application. That way, we can tag those projects and we can assume that they're going to have the same requirements. Yeah, it's just communicate to us and we'll just make a review, like the same requirements for all, instead of having one by one.
Have you experienced something differently, Mr. Riz?
Well, it just, in other words, I haven't seen a reduced time.
Okay.
And I haven't pulled the permit in a while.
Okay.
But I didn't... I would communicate to them that this is a repeat of...
Right.
And I give a specific address.
Of another address, right.
Yeah, specific address, same plan. And the things that change, okay, whether the plan's up here, right, or we're going to mirror outside as well. The orientation for the manual J, you know, that can change as far as the requirements of the air condition, so provide that one showing the correct orientation and where it's facing. So that's one component. And I haven't seen a reduced amount of time when, you know, submitting a repeat plan. I basically have a few plans that I build over and over, change the front elevation to reduce the monotony, and we move on down the line. The other concern that I've had from day one on Evol is that we're having to... Let's say the plant has 12 sheets. We're having to split it up, label every sheet, even if it's a repeat plan or not. And I don't understand, you know, why you need 12 sheets. Within the system, there's not 12 folders either. It seems to me like you submit it like we used to do, you know, PDF. It has all the sheets in one plan and it's easier to review. I mean, that's a suggestion. It'll save us time from having to manually label every sheet and submit, and especially if it's a repeat plan. I mean, you submit one PDF and it has everything in there. I mean, that's what I submit to Saul for construction. I give him one PDF, he's got the building permits, he's got the site plan, he's got all the sheets that he needs to execute his job on the field.
Okay. Mr. Riz, I just want to let you know, the ABEL system, the way it works is that it requires to have a file per plan. So that way, we can just track the corrections per plan and that way, not all the set has to be resubmitted. So instead of having, let's say, if the complete set is 12 plans, you're just going to resubmit corrections for the floor plan and the site plan. You're just going to submit revised plans only for two files instead of the complete set. So that's the way that the system works, and it's been implemented since 2020. And for residential, we started like two years ago. But that's the system, how it works.
I'm suggesting that for repeat plan?
Yes.
In order to note that our previous events...
Okay, so to stack up, okay, maybe what we could do is have some type of pre-approval that you can utilize like pretty much anywhere. So let us look at that. Can somebody take down that?
Yeah, we can schedule a meeting for your projects.
But I mean, it's an idea to have some type of pre-approval that that plan has been approved for my company and I can utilize it pretty much anywhere I want.
Yeah. So then, you guys, so that means it has to be cross-linked to the address. Let's say they have models A, B, and C.
Right.
And let's say for address such and such, we're going to use model A.
That's the way we still...
Yes.
They have to be linked to the addresses.
Yes, we can just label them, as I mentioned. Whenever you start the submission of your application, just let us know which addresses are going to be model A, model B. That way, we can just have the prototype requirements for each. And we don't have to... It also saves us time for us just to have the same requirements. Instead of reviewing 30 houses, we know we're just going to review three models.
I think that's very doable and maybe having those pre-approved beforehand. And that way, you can say, I'm going to come in next month and I'm just going to use these three models. So that's something that we could definitely do.
Okay. Any other questions for residential?
Yeah, before we finish, I just want to hear a little bit more feedback on what has been your experience on the residential side, on the turnaround. I just want to get an idea of what we're looking at. Because those are some of the things that we're focusing on, trying to reduce this timeframe with things like this, like having a model and all those types. So if there's anybody that wants to ask a question.
And that for a residential permit, you need to have a public right-of-way review. Is that correct?
So what?
The public?
The public right-of-way?
Yes.
Now, if we have planted areas that are residential, why do we need to go to right-of-way?
Well, because we need to verify the existing conditions. It had happened that sometimes the driveway there intersected by any utilities or manholes or...
Well, that you can do when you're looking at your residential permit review. Because all the utility work on subdivisions has already been approved by engineering. The only thing would be if somebody's decided to build a house and they're going to put a driveway over an inlet, then that would be what you need to look at. But the right-of-way, I don't see a need for that. I don't see a need for that form at all. Because they're planted areas, they've gone through the process, and everything has been proved.
And that's the only thing I can think of, Mr. Riz, that just for the driveway location, there's no obstructions or biohydrant or...
It's just a matter of sending someone from the Building Department to look at that application on the residential.
Yeah, and that's what we currently do. We have, whenever we receive an application for residential projects, we take the site plans to our inspectors. Our right-of-way inspectors are very efficient. And they go to the top side and we get the results right away in the same day. So we can get them approved within less than five business days.
But couldn't you do that on your computer? Because you've got all the subdivisions there, you've got, you know, where all the right-of-way information is.
Well, it's because sometimes the plans, they don't match the existing conditions. That's why we send our inspectors just to fill, verify.
But let us look at that.
Look at that because I don't see a need for a letter from right-of-way to continue the building process.
Okay. Thank you for your suggestion. Okay, now, Ms. Liliana Silva's going to talk.
Sorry, I didn't get anything on that. I just want to get a perspective, if anybody can, just on the number of days. I got two people. Sometimes it's a week, thank you. Sometimes it's four, five weeks. Okay. And that's Riza? Yes. Yes? Okay.
For permit process?
I hope it wasn't right of the...
Just in the backend of the permitting, I know that when everything gets approved in the system and then you're waiting, and then there's like a lag time now. You guys issue the CO. Like it's taking way longer than it used to be. So I know there's some processes that are changing, some people that are changing, but just getting the CO is kind of like a...
Are we going to talk about that later?
It's not included here, but we can talk about it. Of course, our building division is in a transition phase right now. So we're trying to get some delayed projects and the current projects at the same time. And we're doing our best effort. Believe me, we're trying the best just to handle both the delayed projects from previous staff and the current ones. And right now, we're, I don't know if you're aware, but we're short-staffed. So we're double. It's not an excuse. And believe me, we have our staff working after hours and sometimes during the weekends and trying to get your projects out as soon as possible.
So we'll look at, I know that's another one of the things that I probably take calls on.
Because you think that everything's approved, so you're assuming you can move forward with your loan process and your customer. But for some reason, we get stuck there and it's such a big delay that it's causing issues.
Yeah, and I hear, I guess at some point, maybe years back, there was some improvement, I believe, that I've heard now recently, but I guess it's gone back to where it's taking longer. So we'll look at those things. And I guess our goal would probably say, have it within 24 to 48 hours. That'll probably be the best that we're going to try to see if we can hit those marks.
Yeah, just, we highly recommend you to have your inspections scheduled on time. Remember that the inspection systems, right now, if you schedule after three, it's going to be scheduled for the... Before three, it's going to be scheduled for the next business day. And if not, it's going to be to another business day. So consider that. Because sometimes we receive calls of asking for the CO and their inspections are not scheduled. They're missing final, they're missing fire or coming, so yeah.
Yes, I want to address the home system. Because we don't know on how the plan reviewers, we have to go to the front desk. After we go to the front desk, we get the message. Then if the front desk does not answer, we go and it tells us, we will get our answer. Somebody will call you back within the next business day. I don't need my answers tomorrow, I need them today. So therefore, I leave a message. If we do get a call back the next day, they'll let it ring two, three times. You don't get to that call, they don't leave a message. You call back and you say, I'm returning the call. Well, I don't know who called you. So there you go, you're lost. That should be addressed.
Okay. And so that probably is it. I'm going to be working on these other things with... I'm gonna be working on these other things with the demo permits, the CO's process to be reused, residential. But that's probably the first thing I'm gonna work on.
Because you want, you want to address the problem, let's say, if you get a call and they don't answer, or you look on the code that says this, or you look in this badge and you'll find the answer. You can't talk to them.
Right, and so that's probably the first thing I was discussing with the city manager this morning, I told him I was gonna have this town hall. I'm glad because we have all these issues and things that come up. And so that's probably the first thing that he knows, that he's going to directly go, why don't you look at the customer service, have somebody answer that phone. That's what I'm gonna be looking at probably here this week. All right, now, I'm exactly, I I go through the same thing, so all these things I have now, I just have everybody in the right line, right? So now I died and then take me to the, to the answering machine, so yeah, it should not be like that, it should be something else.
When talking, so, I was in one of the town hall meetings for, it's the city manager over there, and he talked, he talked specifically about his experience transferring the title on his vehicle to here at County, and he said, man, that's what we need. We need to emulate what they're doing there, a quita la reda office, or get in there and somebody reach you and, oh, we need to go here, you know, that's right. It's a head-down with the goal, so.
It is, and it will, and I know that right now, there's somebody at the counter, but I don't know what happens around to that, which once you get to the counter, check in. But I do agree with what I'm saying, yes.
I have a question. How often does that happen with the fire department when you call us?
Never. Never, unless we leave.
Let me get with, see how he's doing. No, 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 but, no, no, that's one of the first things I'm gonna say, right now. Right now, I look at that, and I know somebody called me my day. I go over there and. They can build more. Oh, the A's, oh, for downtown. So how does that the economic development department? And so.
She was, we had problems getting her, you know, her and she was all. That's what he said.
Are we gonna talk about the COs later or? Well, just might as well, I'm opening up, but I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate what you mentioned as far as the final inspections, but recently, this past week, we had an issue with a couple of homes that we were actually risking their loan process because we're not getting the COs on time. And the problem was not the final inspection, because the final inspection was passed since last Wednesday and no communication at all. We keep calling, nobody's returning any phone calls, not to mention that sometimes you hear, okay, the CO is there, but it's missing two signatures. And then, so, okay, if that's a problem, you know, it used to be, just to your point, 24, max 48 hours. And now it's taking four, five days because it's missing one signature, sometimes it's missing two signature, or sometimes it has both signatures, but nobody's communicating with the builder, hey, here is the CO. Or sometimes they're even calling us to say, hey, can you send someone to pick them up? I mean, it's been, like, for the last couple of years, it's been the process the way that as soon as you guys have it, you just go ahead and email it to us. But the main problem is that maybe, you know, the city is not realizing that how much damage it's doing to the customer and the builders, because they might even, you know, the the whole process of the loan, the loan process might fall out of astro and, you know, you can't go to the house. So that has been an issue for the last, I would say, three, three years, like, three years. So it's an easy fix, but nobody is saying, okay, how come it's it's missing two signature every time that they need it? Or who is the one in charge saying that, hey, you just came out, assuming obviously the final inspection was passed? Okay, who's the person in charge right away to say, okay, get it to them ASAP? Because there is nothing else to to look at. I mean, if the CO is out there and it's missing two signatures, I'm assuming that the person that is gonna sign them off, he has already seen all this stuff and it's good to go.
It used to be that we had to do the two signatures.
Correct. Correct.
Which is supposed to be that.
Right.
For changing that step. Some reason it changed, a lot of activity.
Correct, and then you try to call them and, you know, there's no communication. But I think whatever was happening two years ago or three years ago, it was working on perfectly. So I guess we can just go back to whatever we were doing before.
Let's look at that, I'll take that, going back to the same thing. The customers are return the call, but also the time served.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any more questions for residential or concerns?
Yes, we've been experiencing a lot of delays with the green permits as well. We see the promo for the project, but then it takes like two or three or four days until we get the green permit. Sometimes we need to request it by email and before we were getting, as soon as we get the approval, we were getting the green permits on the same file as well.
Okay, well, for that, right now, currently, we have instead of three persons for the residential staff, we only have one under training. So we have another commercial plans examiner that used to process the residential applications, and she's also working with us, half, half commercial and half residential. As I mentioned, as I mentioned before, we're short staff right now, it's not an excuse, but we're trying our best. Just whenever you have any issues, let us know, contact me directly and so we can find out how can we help you with that. Okay, and for the COs, the residential and the commercials, weren't working, we had a meeting last week with our director, Ms. Vanessa Guerra, who's absent today, but we agreed that we're gonna let the customers know, one, the final inspection is approved with the with the fire inspection, we're gonna let you know and we're gonna notify the applicant from the ABV system that is to please allow us no more than 48 hours. So that's an agreement that we just got last week. So we're gonna be tracking the electrical, the finally building inspections and the fire inspections for commercial, and you're gonna get an email from us once, once the permit is issued, we're also gonna let you know that after the final inspection is approved, please allow us two business days, the maximum to process. So we already, we also set up in case the COs, well, as far as I know, they have always required two signatures. I don't know if Mr. Chavez or my director will change that, but we already established also, like, if I'm absent, there's someone else that can sign on my behalf and also for the director, so we can avoid the delays. So those are some improvements that we are going to start implementing to help you expedite your your CO process.
Okay, I'll be, I'll take a look at that, because if there's only one signature required, then, I mean, I don't see why the director should be signing off, but maybe I'll have another conversation, see if I can work on that.
Yeah, but she was talking about the permitting, residential. Once everything is approved, and I keep, I'm a permit expert, so I ever send a law contract, so I keep calling city for that. Once the residential's all approved, then what I do is I make sure that I pay out all the fees, two same time to say, okay. So I get everything approved and I'm checking, I go, hey, why can't it? Because it's verified, paid it. But they don't verify, the government doesn't verify, they can't go in there or they don't want to allow. They have to send it to Mercedes, Mercedes verifies it, then sends it back at another day. Again, can't they just, you're getting it? It's paid, zero balance, pass it through. Why wait another day, I'm gonna do two more days to get your permit? That's what I'm talking about.
Is that something if you look in the system?
Yes, I can look into the system. Whenever Mercedes is absent, you can also reach Ms. Barbara Avila. She's our backup for any commercial projects for the.
So the issue is, why send it to her if you guys didn't check it?
Well, as that's an administrative task, we used to do it before, but then we were delaying on getting all the the permits paid and everything, so we, in the previous administration, we agreed to move that task to admin staff, so we could get more time for the plan review instead of collecting the fees.
So I'm just, maybe you're saying, that's a free.
The same one, it's talking about, and that's the need to, we get more permits and two later, they, they were telling me they were paid, that we haven't given. So we had to go to your office and square that away, even though we have our experience.
No, I didn't hear it.
So that he mentioned that he had already paid the permit, but he had to go back to the office?
To verify, because the, the, I don't have taken my plan, he told me you had paid, I'm sorry, he paid. So I guess that information, when he did pay, it's not getting that so long to be out.
Did you pay at the counter or?
Yeah, yeah, we paid it at the counter.
Oh, at the counter, so will you pay online, you get, you have to see.
Yes, it's because when, when there's a payment process in the, in the system, we don't get notified. I mean, there's no way that we can know that you have paid unless you contact us. We don't have a, the system does not send us a notification. So, yeah, that's the reason that we don't, we don't know if you have paid or not. I mean, we do a weekly follow-up on the, on the projects and, and, but if you, if you pay, just let us know, give us a call or send us an email and, and we can move on your project.
Is there a way that, like, your IT department and permit company that that would be addressed with you? Now, I don't have to go to all those steps.
Couldn't you just add folder in your permit receipt?
Well, for the ABV projects, the way that you, we can be notified is by you returning the final payment verification task. And because when we send you that is because there's a pending fee to be paid. So when it's paid, you just return it to us and that way we can be notified, but not just by making the payment, we don't have our system.
One of the items, someone, just because I just minimize all the workflows, I know it's something, not, not trying to put any blame on, on anybody, when you see the workflow, you have the reviewer communicating to the customer, then the customer to the admin, then the admin, you know, so there's a lot of back and forth, so that workflow is a day, a day, a day, a day, a day. And so what's happening is that you have ABV and then Navoline, Navoline's treating the permitting, ABV is treating the review process. Going back to the payment, they're not communicating. And so, so, so pretty much, pretty much that, that communication we're talking about is the customer having to tell from the ABV, I mean, from Navoline, and then communicate it back to the ABV reviewer, it's been paid, so they're not communicating.
They're having like two administrations working on the communication between the two softwares, that's something that we will have to check with management about, but, yeah, IT and, and our two previous administrations have been working on that.
I'll, I'll go with our IT, because if it's a technology issue or communication between softwares, I think it should be over.
There's also one other, anytime.
There's a question, sorry.
Anytime that we're asked to do something, to amend something, we're having to send it, we're having to request to be able to post, it seems to me like that system should be open now, that we can go in there and, you know, just drop it into, into, but you have to ask for permission.
Open it up to you again.
Yeah, that's a, I mean, I, you know, maybe they should have a separate folder, where they have a folder for the files, they have a folder for the documents, but we have a third folder, make it open, and then we can drop files into that third.
The rest will be frozen or whatever.
Yeah, exactly, because that, that causes unnecessary delays. I don't understand why we can't go to one system.
Yeah. In that one system, you have two. You've got two different software, they don't communicate.
In that line, it's probably one of them, you know, that.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll look at those two systems, I know that systems came in early recently, four years, four or five years ago, but I'm familiar with it, I can navigate through it, but I need to.
Okay, so, yeah.
Oh, it's for the camera, okay. On the, on the mechanical side, we, over the years, we've noticed increases in.
I cannot hear you, I'm sorry.
Can you? On the mechanical side, my name's Rick Darsa, first time here, no, it's not AA, right? Well, it should be, right? No, on the mechanical side, I've noticed over the years that we've, it's become a little bit more treacherous there towards the end of the building process. Well, we, we've been adding a little bit more and more to, to that side from, from the standpoint of the permitting process. For instance, the leakage tests for each new home, not sure when that got implemented, but, and, and also the duct sealant, which I've, I've pretty much helped implement in the 90s. All of these have contributed to the added cost to a house. And I'm, I'm wondering if anything else down the pike is coming along that we have reviewed that all these fine gentlemen here and women can, can understand that there's, there's sometimes those things are implemented, but we're the last ones to know. There's, there's not an email that goes to every mechanical contractor, it's out there that says, well, these changes are gonna be implemented, and therefore, sometimes you don't add it to your cost. And so that's one issue that I, that I have with that. The leakage test is, is one thing, if you're building a new home and, and you can't get your CO unless you get that leakage test, that, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure when that happened, but I can guarantee you that it's not 100% proof, it's not a hundred proven method to try and figure out whether your house has a leakage, leakage system in it or it has leakage. So we might have to review that. The second part of that, the city of San Antonio, when I work over there, you get to call your inspectors, or your inspector gets to call you when he's on his way to do your final inspection. In this town, they get to go there when you're not there, write a report, you get to go online, read what's wrong with it, fix it, that's two days down the line, and this fine gentleman over here is trying to close his house, this deal, can't get a CO because we have to go fix it. Inspector has to go again, that's three days. If he doesn't find it appropriately done, that's four days. So that, that's the cost of, of doing business with the city in terms of inspections, and, and I really think that it helps them to call whoever the mechanical contractor is and tell him, I'm on my way to go see the inspection right now, meet me there, whatever we can fix right there, fix it, so we can get that thing approved and get the whole process moving. So that's one of those two things that I saw.
Just to follow up on your, on the time, I've gone here, I'm city council, newer parent, and I've talked about third-party inspections, set up a system for third-party inspections, and the reason I've mentioned that is because in about 10 builders, that represents 70, maybe even 80% of all the new permits in town for, for new homes, right? Another commercial concern, the residential. And it seems to me that there should be a process for retired, you know, inspectors that have all the certification, where we can submit their party inspections and the city reviews the inspection result, as opposed to getting any trucks, you know, to send that out there, or any cable. Do you see some, do you see some problems? Okay, well, you know, we'll assess communication, feedback, back to the inspector, feedback to the builder, and we can create a continuous improvement process.
Right.
Right now, the system, although we had it, it's just gonna lend itself for continuous improvement. So I think we can try to set that up and then spot check them. And then I got audit, and so when the audit have looked at the city, they don't check every single check that we did, the checkbook, they spot check, they see some, they're very varied, they check some more, same thing here on public property. And, you know, I see that list over there, and it says 33.
I know, I was gonna say that. Is that part of the thing, you hope you can get your permit at 56% of the time? You trust that you're gonna get, no?
No, no, 33%, I guess, you know, things don't move smoothly because we don't trust each other.
I agree.
We don't trust each other, I can't understand why. I can't understand why.
Well, it's because we're, you're talking about the old-school way of doing things around here. Back in the day, everybody used to get a, from Mr. Rivera at engineering, go ahead and get it going, we'll talk about it, but just don't stop the project from moving forward. And I think that's where everybody wants to go today. Obviously, there's some more guidelines, and there's some more steps to go before we get there. But I think it'll eventually get there. My, 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 and this is not as a councilman, it's just that I'm trying to figure out, everybody's trying to figure out a little bit more on the efficiency part. And, and, and I'm, and I'm talking about that, but also, when's the last time, Ramon, if we, if we can get a, a review again on some of the fees that are going on up there? And that's really where I'm getting at. As we move forward, this town is gonna, it's continuously blowing up, and, and our fee structure might not be as appropriate as it's supposed to be as we move forward, on both sides. Because I don't see it as efficient with, with the, with, with the cost of, of the fee for us for that inspector to go out there four times. It just doesn't pay for itself. And so I'm thinking that's a waste of money on, on the city's part for, for the inspector to go out there four or five times. And at the same time, it's an added cost also for the developer, the developer and the, and the construction company to move forward.
Can you talk about the third-party inspections? I think it's important that matches up with staffing issues. Because if you don't pay top dollar, you run into staffing issues all the time. And all of that gets migrated to a builder trying to meet a deadline and obtain a certificate of occupancy, and keep the whole machine rolling. But when you don't have enough plumbing inspectors, at least with plumbing inspectors, there's an out. But you get into electrical, and structural, and foundation. And we also get into hurried inspections, which get into quality of life and safety issues. But taking this problem and giving them a relief valve where they'll be happy to pay for their own in some cases, solve two problems with one stone, so to speak. But give them a way out so they're not sitting there trying to meet a deadline with the bank.
And the code allows for that?
Absolutely, but it hasn't been well-received with the city.
I'm doing it in my office, except in my, I'm doing residential buildings. I'm doing foundations, I'm doing foundations, and she types my letters because, blah, 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 my letter. I have to, or, you know, I have to.
Yes, just in regards to the third-party inspections, please try to submit your letters or approvals from a certified company or engineer, because if it does not belong to the scope of work that you are trying to approve. Let's say we have a person that is certified as pest control applicator for maybe foundation approval, because it doesn't match, you know, like, the experience or the, unless it's backed up by an engineer or someone that is certified under the scope of work that we're trying to approve, we have no issues with that, and.
So, so I guess, so then, I'm taking it that, would you allow it?
Yes.
Allow it, so then, could I just, just in general, looking at it, if I'm a licensed plumber, and I'm not doing the plumbing work, can I approve somebody else's plumbing as a master plumber? Is that, sort of, you know, because you said certified, what kind of?
Yes, but let's say if your experience is for, in this case, Ms. Ramirez, she's a residential, she's certified to approve residential projects, but not foundation for commercial.
But what about on the H that, that you were talking about, on electrical, like?
For.
Also, we have to use.
Wait a minute, you're opening up a can of worms here. Well, I'm asking, I'm asking about civil work. We need, if I have a civil engineer who is certified, do I need to do the inspection for civil engineer, or a structural engineer for my structural?
Yes.
For, for structure, would you allow it, for foundations?
For the engineer of record.
If I, do I need to do my utility work? Do I need to do utilities? Because I have a civil engineer who is doing my fire lines, my water lines, my sewer lines. Do I need an inspection through the city for the utility department? But I, because I have a civil engineer.
Okay, well, that, that would go more into the, if it's fire lines and that, we have to, but at least, I guess, there's options, I'm, I'm seeing.
No, no, I'm asking, I'm asking, because we're opening up a can of worms. If I can get inspectors.
Yeah, it depends on, on, on the engineer. Like, as a civil engineer, I have my experience. The board allows me, authorizes me to approve anything that is under my supervision, and that I know that I'm capable of inspecting. So it's, it's gonna be up to that engineer to sign off on it. Okay.
We're, we're doing residential, and we have a structural engineer for the, for the foundation. And he checks it, but we're still coming, and that's, that's.
Yeah, but if, maybe.
He's approving, he's approving it.
That should be enough for us to, I mean, the code allows it.
Yes, if it's the engineer of record, it's, it's also allowed, yes.
When you have that third-party inspection, what are the right parties that you need to send it to? Sometimes you send it to someone in the building, and it doesn't get down to an inspector. An inspector will, will disapprove it, and then.
Well, for the third-party inspections, I highly recommend, so you can send it directly to me. Because I will coordinate with the inspector's superintendent, and then we'll have a meeting with the inspector that needs to approve the system. In case that inspector is not available, his supervisor can approve it, or I can approve it on the.
We want to also, because I know we have the general email.
Yes.
I mean, I know that you're mentioning, send it to you, which we appreciate, but then you'll get bombarded with.
Yes, you can also send it to our general email, dldgpermits@ci.lorita.us.
It's a general email, and anybody can pick up a chance.
Yeah.
So, so there's a.
Yes, go ahead.
Can I still build my own house?
Can you please, I can hear, they have a question here. Okay, go ahead.
Can I still build my own house if I don't have a contractor license?
If you don't have what?
Contractor license.
The owners can apply for their own permits, but they're gonna be the ones responsible for any insurances, any process that they need to submit to our division. It will go directly with, with you, with the owner. It's by their own risk, any insurance, any inspections, any work that is pending, any revised plans, or additional information that we might require, then we'll go straight to the owner.
What about if they use my email? A lot of people, they don't want to, they don't want to.
Oh, yeah, but in this case, his question was if he can build by himself and process by himself. But if they hire a permit expediter, there's an issue with the, with the main applicant. The purpose of the main applicant enabled is just to have that person communicate all the information to the engineers, the owners, and everyone. Because sometimes we get, like, calls from everyone just for one project, and we have a main applicant. So it, it really takes us time, like, to talk with the 10 persons, just to let them know the same status. Like, in this case, if you're the main applicant, we direct to you, and then you distribute the information to the owner or the.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Contractor, owner, and immediate EDA.
Yes, mhm. And if, if you need training, we're able, just let us know. We can schedule them online or in person.
Okay, we'll take a couple more questions, so we can move on also with the presentation.
Yes.
So, this is not something that I'm saying does happen, but what I perceived is that there's a cyclical, there's a cycle to where sometimes we get permits back really fast. Like, my record is three days. And sometimes it takes kind of a long time. And whenever we ask, it's, it's always, we get one of two responses. One is the people are new, like, the plan reviewers are new, or short-staffed. Is there something that's being done to address the, I guess, retention of staff so that we can get some experienced plan reviewers to expedite these a lot faster, or?
And how many are really certified? How many are already certified?
Plan review? How many, how many plan reviewers are certified?
For commercial, they're all certified already. They got their certification in less than a year. And for residential, we just have Ms. Miriam Aquinas, residential supervisor. Ms. Sonia Marquez, and Ms. Linares, and Ms. Ornellas are no longer plant examiners for residential. So that's why we are.
Are they certified?
No, they're, well, Ms. Linares used to be, she's certified. And Ms., Ms. Villarreal is going to get her certification, as she's not, she's just acting for the residential division right now.
How many, how many residential plant examiners do we have currently?
Currently, it's just Ms. Villarreal. Yes, as, as I explained to you, we used to have three persons, and right now it's just one, and she's acting, she just started like two months ago.
I will, I will look at that.
Yeah.
The retention part is hard to answer, because, again, it takes dedication. It takes dedication to work those three people. They have to be committed.
So I've also seen that a lot of times, these new people, they're not necessarily new to the city, but they're being, like, shifted around internally. So would it be possible, in the times that you are short-staffed, to have some of the people that have been plan reviewers in the past that still work at the city to help out?
Now, I'll, we're still gonna get anything that we've been trying to, you know, pushing. We'll, 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 and those are the first things that we're going forward. Every time we get staffed, this is, this is extremely important.
Just one last comment, the third party. If we're able to get a third party to inspect the entire process and certify it, and submit it to you, and that's good enough? Just to be clear, because I know we've done it on, on exception things, like plumbing, plumbing, things like that.
Yeah, if they're certified or.
Certified the entire process.
Their expertise is on, on the scope of work that you want to approve, yes. Just, we would like you to mention, like, to, to have a certified company or engineer or someone that is, that knows the work that is approving and, and certified.
I have a question, I want to say yes.
Yes.
But it's gonna, I, I just don't wanna, I'm trying to understand, you said you turn in a whole package at the end?
Yeah, the law, it kinda sounded like you were.
No, I think it would have to, you would still have to follow the inspection process.
Yes.
You would have to follow that, and submit, and get just patient, and we can, that's the way I would proceed.
And the third, the purpose of the third-party inspection is to have someone else to go and inspect, but not to skip the inspection, okay? Okay, so we're gonna move on to commercial projects with Ms. Liliana Silva.
Good afternoon. My name is Liliana Silva Inocosa, and I will be explaining a little about the commercial projects. First, we have the new construction, finish-out, additions, and remodels. All these projects are processed by ABEL. So the first thing that you need to do is submit the application to the email that we use, that is dldgcomm, is that for commerci, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So you submit your application to our email, and then, once we receive your application, the project is created in ABEL. Once the project is created, you will receive, if you are a user, you will receive the project to log in and start uploading your files. If you are new to ABEL, you will receive a notification, so you can create your user and your password, okay? Next, you will be having the pre-screen phase, which is taking care from Ms. Camacho, she's our project coordinator. She will review all your documentation and plans that are uploaded correctly. We have a lot of resources for you on your, on our webpage, like the guide for commercial projects, so you can see how ABEL works, and how can you obtain the more, more of, of this, of this program? Because there is a lot of things that you can do with the program to benefit, for your benefit, right? For the timeline, for, to expedite your project. Once you pass the pre-screen process, the coordinator, we, will, will check your final payment, I'm sorry, your payments, so you can pay for the, for the project, for the permit. And once you pay for your fees, which is pay your fees and return the task. If you leave the task there, we will never receive the notification that you already paid for your permit. Once we receive the task, the project is assigned for review to the different departments, and for commercial as well. And this is called the first cycle of review, which it can take from five to 10 days. It depends on the, on the, on the projects that we have for review. Then you will receive, if you have any corrections, you will receive your corrections, so you can work on them. Also, you can start working on the change marks until we, we finalize your, your review. There, there is a lot of reports that you can see for the timeline, for which department is pending, or who already completed your review. And all the comments that we publish, it will be, you can see it on the report. It's live. If I can, if I publish a comment, you will see it right away. So it's available for you 24/7, anytime. You can just log in and see what's happening with your project. Well, at the end, if you provide the corrections, the project will be approved. If you don't provide all the corrections, we will take another cycle until the project is approved by all the departments. For the, for the release, once we finish the review, you will receive the task to pay the final payment. If you paid all the fees at the beginning, you will not receive that because you already paid. If you have any pending fee, you will receive this task, so you can pay the fee. Then you will have to return the task to us, so we can process your project, your permit, and the plans can be sealed. I just want to mention that the, the permit will be uploaded in the system. I know a lot of you like to go to the office and pick up the permit, that's perfectly okay. But I just want to let you know that the permit will be there, so you can print the permit. If the permit gets damaged in the, in the site, you can print it again and put it there again. So it will be there as a PDF file, and you can print it every time you need it. In order for us to issue a permit, the contractor needs to be registered with the city. A lot of time, we receive applications without general contractor. We still continue the review, but just, we just advise you that at the end, if you don't have a general contractor, you will not receive the permit until you have one. That's for all the permits that we have, not just for ABEL. For, well, we have the foundation-only permit, that's a permit that recently got its own fees. It used to be a no-fee permit. So right now, we have the foundation-only permit. You have to request by email that you need, that you want to have a foundation-only permit, and the project needs to be in plan review. We cannot process a foundation-only permit that is in pre-screen. Once the project is assigned for all the departments, you can request your foundation-only by email, and it can be processed. The approval is by email, and once we receive all the approvals from, from fire, utilities, and engineering, right? Once we receive the, the approval from them, the foundation-only is approved, and you will obtain your permit for foundation-only, but it's reviewed by email. I also want to clarify that all the plans for foundation-only must be uploaded in ABEL. It's not a separate. It's not a separate review, it's just a separate permit and any corrections that you receive from any of the divisions for foundation-only must be uploaded in the system. Just to coordinate that any approvals are there and not, and it's not a different plan from which is on the ABO system. And, well, that's all for foundation. Uh, we have, uh, other projects that are reviewed by email, small projects like, like, uh, re-roof, block fence, demolition, installation permits, signs, uh, irrigations. All that information, all the requirements for that, we, uh, we are providing, uh, some information there on, on the pack uh, for, uh, general requirements and, uh, the checklist, the complete checklist. So you can see, um, all the requirements for each, uh, permit that we have. All those permits are reviewed by email. I'm sorry, I need to drink water. Pausa. Sorry. Okay, so you, you have all the information there. Also, we are sending you any requests that you may have questions, like if you send us an email, please send me the requirements for re-roof. We are happy to send you that information, but we wanted to provide it today because we know that you may have questions for one or another permit. So we, we are happy to provide that information for you as well by email or in person, if you go to our office. Um, the plan review process by email is, uh, basically the same. It's just, you submit your application, uh, via email, we, along with your documents. All the documents that are required must be attached to your email. We also are asking you to provide the type of permit and the address on the subject of your email so we can have, uh, a track, uh, uh, a way to track your, your emails and it not gets, uh, it doesn't get lost on our inbox because we receive a lot of emails with that subject and we cannot know for which permit is that information. So we will, um, be very, uh, happy we receive those emails with your basic information. Let's say you are, you're one on a re-roof for, uh, 1230, I don't know, Street. Just put that on the subject, attach your files and send the email to the BLDG com email. Then, uh, the pla- the review is done by email and if you have any corrections, we will send, we will be sending you an email with those corrections so we can receive them back and we can, uh, review again. Uh, and once your project is approved, you will receive, uh, an email uh, from the BLDG permits email with your fees and your permit number. Once you, you pay your fees, you reply with your, um, ticket?
With your receipt.
With your receipt and then we can move forward to the issuance of the permit. Uh, basically it's that. Uh, we are trying to expedite those reviews just taking account that, uh, we also review the ABO projects. We receive walking, uh, customers. We attend calls and, uh, we have a lot of meetings as well. So we are trying to do our best to provide with a, uh, with an excellent customer service. But, uh, as I said, it's a lot of work that we have to do every day. Um, and it's, it's great for us, but also, uh, it can be a lot of, uh, uh, delay because of that. We are trying to get all the information for you in one page so you can move forward. If you have questions about any of the projects or permits that we have provide you with the requirements, you can ask for, for any clarification by email, in person or by phone. So we are open, uh, to attend any customers, but, uh, I just wanted to be aware that we have a lot of walk-ins and meetings as well. As, at the same time, we are reviewing your projects in ABO. Uh, I think that's it for me. Yes. So we are moving with zoning division permits. Uh.
Before that, any, any questions on, uh, on the commercial side? Yes, sir.
I hear you asking, you said you had a 21-day shot clock to review the applications?
Yes, by the ordinance.
You all have a shot clock implemented for reviewing, uh, will they revise sheets?
Well, we don't, we don't, we, we don't actually use the 21 days. We use, uh, as soon as you submit your application, as soon as the project coordinator sees your email, she creates the project for you. Then you go to pre-screen and it's up to the customer, uh, for the information to be provided as clear as possible so you can move forward to plan review. If you've, if you have a lot of information missing on your pre-screen, you will take a lot of time to move forward to the plan review. So it's up to all the customers and, and applicants to submit your, uh, your applications along with all the, your documents and your plans as well. That will help with your timeline. But we don't, we don't use the 21 days to review. We move forward as soon as we review, uh, receive your application and each cycle for plan review, once you pass your pre-screen, it takes between five and 10 days for each cycle. Is, do you have any other question?
In, in reference to the new energy code, 2021 that is being implemented now, uh, there's a section there for the electrical where if the building is larger than 25,000 square feet, it requires monitoring of the usage and has to be reported somewhere and, uh, is that gonna be implemented or? I don't, I, I heard that the city of San Antonio moved, moved it up to 100,000 square feet. They'd say you have an office that is 100,000 square feet, right?
Yes.
It's above the 25,000 square feet. Now, uh, most of the projects, they're warehouses. The warehouses aren't bigger, but they're not occupied as office, right? So I, I hope that that will also get confused.
Yeah, okay, I understand your question. For small projects, we don't have a, uh, yet, uh, change mark or comment on that as per now. But I'm sure for warehouses, you have your plans, your MEP plans sealed by a civil, uh, by a professional engineer. So I'm sure she, he's making, uh, he's taking care of that. We are not taking any, we are not making any corrections on the energy code as per right now.
He's, he's a PE in this space, so.
Yeah, we're not implementing, implementing any requirements right now.
Yeah, we don't have anything right now.
For the 2021, I mean, that's, that's the only requirement out of the code, the new 2021 energy conservation code, that it goes a little bit way beyond. But, I mean, I, I don't like the code or anything, but still the city can do something to help out.
Or to reduce the, to reduce the, the amount of square footage?
Yeah, it would have to be.
Okay, we have to discuss that internally.
Yeah, because the codes are adopted by ordinance, right? So we follow the codes, but we also amend the codes. So, uh, I know that on President Joe's side, we've done amendments, you know, the commercial as well. So it's something that we have to amend if we're not gonna input it. We're not going to enforce, enforce, so.
At, at least that section, all the others, uh?
Send me that section so I can.
I'll, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, right now, we are not enforcing that. As per my understanding, as a plan reviewer.
And a property, a property, you know, that, hey, warehouse area is something versus office area?
Yes. So it's very different, uh, when you submit a project for share-only, that you don't have your, um, distribution yet on the inside. But once you submit your application for finish-out, you will have that information with your office and your warehouse space.
He's referring to the top of occupancy.
Yeah.
Top of occupancy. If it's just like, uh, offices, that it'll require to have the, all the extra, uh, monitoring and, uh, type of equipment that is gonna be like way, way expensive.
Yeah, if you could just send us your, your question with the section so we can take a look at it.
Yeah.
Do you have any other question?
Yes, um, I read the article that was in the paper here a couple of weeks ago. There was, uh, in an interview with, uh, Mr., uh, uh, Kilkil.
Kilkil.
Kilkil?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm wondering whether anybody in the city got together with him and discussed some of the complaints?
For which project? I'm not, I'm not aware of that article.
So, uh, I am. And so the city manager reached out to Mr. Kilkil uh, and I made it a point, he emphasized it to me, uh, to make sure that, that we follow up with that meeting. But we've offered, uh, uh, to meet with him. Right before the meeting, I got with Orlie who works for Kilkil Development and, and, uh, I told him that, uh, we have this uh, and we're gonna try to set up something in the next couple of weeks.
Well, it did sound very good for the city.
For, for building department.
According to him, to him. Now, I don't have the big projects that he has.
Right.
I just have little projects. But I seem to, you know, have the same problems that he, uh,
Right.
found, uh, you know, in his, uh, endeavors. The, I don't have a problem with, and I don't think anybody really has a problem with the procedures that you have. You know, the problem is in, in getting the, I mean, communicating with the examiner. We have, we have the examiner and we have the contractor, but then and then we have this program, kind of, kind of like a third party that we have to talk to. We have to talk to this party to be able to talk to you, you talk to them, they talk to us and therefore there's a lot of time involved in this.
Process.
Right.
Can I, can I answer that question first?
Go ahead.
So for communication, for the customers, we don't only use ABO. We have our email, we have our phone call, uh, we have our extension for plan reviewers. If you use our, uh, phone so, phone, uh, call system, you, you will find that once you call the phone number, you can press, uh, option three and any of the five plan reviewers will answer. If it's not the person that you will need to, uh, uh, contact, uh, the call will be transferred for, to the person that you need to, uh, uh, speak to. Right? So we have that information as well. We have, uh, we receive walk-ins as well. If you, uh, would like to meet with us as a walk-in, we receive walk-ins e- every day. I'm sorry. If you are interested in discuss your project with us, we are open to walk-ins as well as scheduled meetings. And also, uh, for each project that is reviewed in ABO, the first cycle, once it's completed, we call the customer. Once it, once it, I'm sorry.
That's fine, you know.
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that. I've had meetings with a, with a building department many times. The problem is that we, sometimes we come into an, you know, where we don't, you know, get to agree on certain things. And, uh, and therefore we get delayed. One of the things that, that, uh, in this program that we have, that we, we have to submit our documents and, and drawings, if you don't have the right file name, it's in, it's in fact. Because recently I sent one in, I, I sent a drawing and I had a space in the file name that was in, in, that was not, not, not supposed to be there. So because of that one space, we probably spent about four or five days just trying to correct it. Now, is there a way that you can correct it? If you see, if I call you and say, look, all it is, is just this space here, all we need is to add a space or remove a space, can you do that?
We can do it as a courtesy the first time, but once we are.
Why can't you do it for minor stuff?
Well, we. Uh, well, excuse me, but, um, we receive several projects. We have like, uh, around 50 to 60 projects for commercial. So imagine like if we do all those, uh, corrections for each of the projects and as the, as the system requires the plans to be individually, sometimes there are files, uh, there are projects that have like 100 or more than 100 files. So that's the reason that we really, um, highly recommend that to have ABO, uh, training and just use the same file name. It's, it's the system that requires to create a new version of the file whenever we upload it. And whoever is the main applicant shall coordinate with, with their engineers or designers just to have the same file. And because sometimes we have some complaints about the main applicant that why do they have to, uh, change the name of the files for the engineer or for the designer? That's something internal between whoever hires that designer or that, uh, engineer just to coordinate the name of the files. But, uh, we can do it as Ms. Liliana said, we do it as a courtesy for the first time, but not as a norm, like, uh, just to be fixing every project and every file for each company. It will take us a lot of time. The same time that you don't want to take, it will reduce the time for us to review.
Well, it takes just another four days or so. You know, or, I, I don't know what you, you know, when we submit the application, we're supposed to put down, you know, filling every block. If there's a block that we don't, that we don't have any information to fill in, we're supposed to put NA.
Yes.
Why is it that you can't figure out that if it's not filled out, it doesn't, it doesn't apply?
Well, uh, in the last administration, we got, um, inspected or?
Audit.
Audit, yeah, we got an audit and, uh, and we shouldn't be filling out the documents for the customers.
You don't have to fill it out.
And if, and we cannot leave, uh, blanks, uh, blank spaces in the application. Yeah, that's something from the auditor.
Another problem I had with this particular little project was I submitted my application and when I had a meeting with, uh, I, I met with you and another lady, I mean, it appeared that that lady who was the examiner didn't have a copy of the application. So she was sending me corrections, uh, to, to be done on the application because, again, she, because she didn't have the copy of the application. But somebody had it in your office.
Yeah, so whenever you submit something, we highly recommend you to get the name of whoever, who did you submit to, who did you email it to? Because if you said no, beside you send it to building, which, which person? And, uh, that's the reason that whenever we do something as a courtesy, we just try to do it once because then the responsibility, uh, is over us of, of loading or.
I've got it short.
Right.
What I want to know is, are you going to meet with Mr., uh, Kilkil?
Yes.
And, uh, those things that frustrated him?
Right.
Whether we would know what it, what those things are so that we know how this is gonna be handled so that we can also handle them.
I've, I've already made it a point from, as soon as I walked in, that was the first thing that, uh, Orlie was the second person that came in. So as soon as I saw him, I grabbed him and said, they, uh, we're, we're working on this.
Mr. Carrigan?
Yes, sir.
I also agree with the comment made by Ms. Kilkil.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we have issues also with the building department. But I don't blame the building department. I blame the city council for not giving you the funds and the personnel that you need to do your job. That's what I blame.
Thank you.
Okay? You need more help. The city is growing like crazy.
Right.
And they need more people in their office here.
Thank you. And like I mentioned earlier, those were some of the things that I'll be looking at to make sure that we're fully staffed and that we have the structure needed to, again, because we understand, just by all of you being here, we understand the importance of this, so.
Thank you.
One thing that I, I just want to mention that I didn't see, uh, anybody, um, done the pre-development?
Meeting.
The pre-development meetings? No? Pre-development meetings? So there's a service that we've provided to meet, uh, beforehand and, and so do you want to elaborate? I didn't see it on the presentation.
Yeah, they're not included, but, uh, we, we have always offered the pre-develop, pre-development meetings, uh, for, uh, commercial projects and, uh, they were free and, uh, a new ordinance was, uh, issued and approved by management. Uh, and we are, there's a fee now of $200, uh, for, uh, I believe, two hours.
So that's a service that's available. I, I encourage you to, to utilize it, that I wanted to see if anybody had it already. Uh, because, uh, part of the idea is for those, uh, meetings to come in handy so when you submit your plans, hopefully it's a smoother process. That, that's the main thing about these pre-development.
There have been like, uh, like a. And we include all the, all the divisions, uh, required for plan review unless you want to have. Unless you want to have just a preliminary meeting, just with quick questions, you don't need to schedule a pre-development meeting.
So, the idea of these meetings is to get the group together, to let them know this is coming up. What should I, uh, look for? Do you see anything here? I'm concerned that I need to make sure that I include my plans so that, uh, we don't delay him as much. And I know there were some questions back there.
Yeah, Ms. Mahana?
Yes.
Yes, basically, okay. I have people out there who are from, uh, uh, I knew the sign company, Salt and Sesame. And we're also having fun here for going on the building, uh, where it's, it's, that, that I felt like, okay, I have all this stuff that they had as well. But I'm also having trouble because we, we have to redo some signs that been here for, you know, there for a long time. We have, uh, Best American, we have, uh, Dark Ride, we have several times and they're redoing their signs. Or they could be, uh, T-Mobile and they have a new image and all this stuff. Well, right now, I need to get the CEO of, somebody that opened a store forty years ago. They don't have a CEO. But they want a CEO. So, now, we have to, the customer has to, we have, and they get it, I mean, because basically, it's, why do I? You know that I've been here for forty years and we've been here.
Right.
It's always right for it.
And so, I had a brief discussion after our phone call yesterday. And so, I brought it up to their attention. I believe we're already looking at it?
Yes.
Yes, we're already looking at it. I do have other suggestions that I haven't, um, ran by them. But at least we, we are looking into those and, and with these other suggestions, I'm sure that we're gonna expedite these things.
The same thing as they, as they're right now. They paint the building and everything, it's not to be, they're rebuilding the building and everything, but they seem to get a flood type, uh, flood type as to.
Development permit, right.
A flood permit.
Yeah, a flood permit. While they were painted really inside, they painted really outside dirty because actually, I'm sorry, I need to get a flood, just get a plan as a permit.
That can be explained by Mr. Hernandez once he's, uh, here, the, uh, at the front.
He has to stay close to me because basically now there's, it gives me very time and everybody out there, I think, timing up and, and I'm trying to, uh, follow what they're wanting, but still, by the way, it's something else and it's something else. And like you all, basically, that's the same thing that's going on with me. I have to submit and resubmit and resubmit. The last time, it took me five weeks to get a permit for a sign.
Can I answer that?
I'm having the same issue as well.
I'll, I'll follow it, yes.
And I feel very strongly that one of the things that you're having on is basically, you're very short-staffed. The people, and you know, and I know. When we did the sign ordinance?
Yes.
I know the ordinance.
Mm-hmm, right.
I know that ordinance because I work with you.
Correct.
Just to make that ordinance. But when I go out there, I know that people don't know the ordinance. And I'm seeing and I'm trying, and I try to stay calm and everything. Believe me, I have never, this is, I've seen anybody out there. I try to work with you and I say, okay, fine, dirt and, 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 but right now, it's hard.
Okay.
It is hard to give her.
And that, that's a part of the reason we're here. And, and I wanted to hear everything firsthand, uh, so that I understand the main issues. And so, those are some of the things that I'm gonna focus on. This was part of bringing me in. And so, uh, now, having my hands on it, uh, I'm gonna be able to, to improve on these things.
Right. Imagine basically what she's saying.
Mm-hmm.
Because I've finished customers, because the ordinance says, did they already apply for, for a CEO of building permit? And let's see, she goes and try, and applies for a sign, they go, no, until you get your CEO. No, it's not accepted. It wasn't, I used to issue permits.
And those are the instructions that are given here, just, uh, uh, to the, to the staff, uh, on a quickly basis.
It's because I, I, when I was doing this, I was, I was following the ordinance and it's that.
Right.
They already applied for a building permit.
Right.
You don't have to wait for a CEO. You can issue the sign.
Though, those instructions have been given, uh, Annabelle, yes, mhm, right. Sheldon, I know you had a question.
Mine's kind of, but I have to run, so I just gotta get it out. Um, on the paving ordinance, we're having a lot of clients from older parts of town come in and, you know, ask us to implement maybe some of the specifications that they already have in the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Which are very expensive, by the way.
Mm-hmm.
Not very economical, but these are businesses that have been there, you know, since the eighties, nineties. And now they're getting fined monthly because of their paving ordinance. So, when we go to apply with your all's, uh, you know, recommendations.
Right.
We get back, well, now we want trees, now we want irrigation, now we want this, but it's already an existing parking lot that most likely cannot, uh, for spacing reasons, you know, how they built it, cannot, you know, implement what you all want.
Right.
So, it's not really like, it's not that you're, it, it's getting treated like new construction.
Mm-hmm.
But these are existing conditions. So, it's really not a paving ordinance, it's a bunch of other things that go behind to kind of comply. Or, I'm sorry, implement. And as it is, I mean, this is, has nothing to do with it, but it is something I feel strongly about.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the only reason we're all here is because trucking and warehousing is big. I mean, none of us here are, you know, oblivious to that.
Right.
But trucking's been in recession for two or three years where rates haven't been going up. Everybody that I know is operating at a loss.
Mm-hmm.
And warehouses, you know, four million square feet are vacant, so they're on their way.
Right.
So, to be tacking on added costs to somebody who's trying to do the right thing, in my opinion, is just kind of adding salt to a loaf of wheat.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, kind of just going back to what they said, you know, it's, you have existing conditions. They're trying to do the right thing.
Mm-hmm.
But then we have to jump through hoops as it is, well, we want a geotech, well, we want this, well, we want that. It already exists.
Right.
Why do you all want us to just add morbidate to somebody who's trying to do the right thing?
The right thing, right, and comply.
And why ask for a geotech for a parking lot? Does that mean that he says you're an engineer?
I'm sorry, uh, can you repeat that?
Why ask for a geotech for a parking lot?
Uh-huh.
You're an engineer, you know, but you're not gonna have a structure there, it's a parking lot. And they're asking for a geotech.
Well, on the, on the pavement, um, it's for the, uh, actual testing requirements, isn't it?
Ones.
It's still private property.
It's.
Yeah, but I'm working on private property.
Right.
So, in other words, you know, something exists and we get out there and find we're on Caliche.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'll go out there and I'll give them several options for either, you know, millions or, or, you know, stabilized base or whatever. Whatever maybe, just to turn in for a permit.
Mm-hmm.
And then when we get to the permit, that's when they add morbidate. So, and on the geotech side, they'll say, okay, well, you're gonna use what we're asking.
Right.
Fine. But, you know, it's on private property, so whether they have a testing lab or not, you know, that's their problem.
Right.
You know?
Right.
In short, basically, from what I heard is that we've got the problems. The, uh, A-boat system that isn't working properly or isn't implemented right. Uh, staffing for the city to rate and communication between departments within the city to rate. Fire, utilities, well, not fire, uh, fire, utilities, uh, you know, the building codes. I mean, between environmental and, uh, utilities, it took me four months to get a permit because they were in conflict with each other.
Okay.
They were in conflict with each other on implementing a particular code. So, those three things are basically, in short, what, you know, we need to take care of and ask.
Okay.
A problem I have, uh, in my opinion. And I'm not in the commercial side, but I've heard comments from people that are really commercial that on the yard part of the warehouse are asking for trees on the yard.
The parking.
Where all the big trucks are moving in and out, I mean, that's, that's kind of part of the, the code. The, the parking for the, for the car is not the yard. So, maybe, maybe it's that misunderstanding or maybe it's legal, but I can understand it, right? It would be trees on the yard.
Okay, let me look at that ordinance and see, uh, what it follows.
I have that from one of the, that they called me and it's like, on the yards.
Okay.
They're just labeling the plant wrong. I mean, but they're exacting fees for trees on the yard.
Uh, I'll look at that, uh, section of the ordinance.
Mr. Kilkil, the city has a good tool that they can use to review all the problems that the different trades have with this building permit. You have a technical review board that can be utilized for that purpose?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's cause remember that we used to have the other divisions under building department. So, we had all the staff from utilities, engineering, environmental, they were under the building department. And it's been like two or three years that they went to each division. So, they have been assigned for other priorities by their supervisors or directors that we don't have, uh, any jurisdiction under.
Yeah, but now, but now we do, because I'm overseeing all those departments.
Yes.
I'm overseeing utilities, environmental, traffic, engineering, planning. So, that's part of the, uh, thing that I'm gonna be working on in creating this, uh, this nucleus.
I have something really quick, cause I gotta go. Uh, I think for projects last year, the CEOs took a while to get it, like, and I know some of the partners on the side of the ABA are trying to take back the work, but we get changes during the project. But when we upload the stuff to the A-boat, we send the, the correction device B, then come back, and then we send them back, and then something else gets added on. So, our constraint is, it would be nice to get all your comments on the first time, though, cause when we get them back, they gotta send them to the ABA, the technical, mechanical, whatever changes were made. So, everybody takes time to receive, so I can get that information back, like, give it to you guys. But when I get it to them and bring it back to you guys, sometimes something else will come up after you've done it. And it would be nice to get all your comments at the first time around because it's hard for us to go through years, again, danger for capacity, and I gotta have this. And if you can, with this, everybody's doing the review, to put all their comments at the first time around. Just they don't, one at a time, and just.
Is it, I'm sorry, is this for a commercial project?
Yes.
Okay, uh, usually, the plant review is done the first cycle. But if you change the plans or the scope of work of the, or there is any change that requires a change mark, it will, it will be added on the second cycle.
Yeah, but there's no change, there's no change.
So, if.
That you, you put in a comment, they give me a comment, there's two comments.
Yes.
They give, they send it back to me, I fix the comments, send it back to A-boat, then the reviewer comes back with four more comments. Why, why didn't he put, give me six comments?
We will need to see each project to provide an answer to individually, individually, because it's a different project.
Okay, and so, if.
It took me six months to get a CEO on school, then it took me another five, six months to another common project.
Let me just add that.
But we're going back and forth.
Yeah. So, uh, if you're gonna set a comments, there should be no reason for getting any additional ones.
Additional ones, right.
Uh, that'll be something else, it's down with the building official and make sure, sure we emphasize that. Um, I know, I think Mr. Kilkil brought a little bit, uh, brought it up earlier about, uh, making a decision. Okay, so, again, that's part of the building official now, that, uh, if there's a decision to be made, that's a code requirement, then our building official's gonna have to make those decisions. Uh, because that's why, that, why, uh, we're at this position.
Is there any, any other question for commercial?
Go ahead.
That, that's not the first time that that's happened, I've gone through that several times. My name is Dan Lauer from Global Commercial Services. I've been a commercial contractor in this region for twenty-five years. I've never seen the mess that's going on here in the city. You people have cost me over a quarter million dollars in the last thirteen months. I want everybody in this room to know that I've done thirteen finish houses in three different states for building basketball projects. Here in Texas, I've been working for a year, I've hopped and walked and driven, and I've had nothing but delays and excuses. We need to get to the bottom of what's going on here.
Okay.
Cause we don't have this time, we're gonna be wasting, especially with the economy the way it is. We need answers until today. You guys reviewed my plans in October, you spent a month crying about comments and, and question marks. We fixed that stuff up, we sent it off to you guys. You didn't give us a review until November. We didn't get our permits until the first week of March. We started working on the project. We asked for an ex, for a review from one of the inspectors to go out there, look at the goods, cause we had some questions. And he went out there and started bitching about the electrician. Then he told us he wasn't gonna pass our stuff until we replaced a bunch of things that were already accepted in the review, i.e. the electrical boxes and the transformer. They were only five years old, there was no reason to, to, uh, re, to replace them. We were told by inspector that we didn't replace them, he wasn't gonna flash the project. So, I went over to talk to Pison, a week later, he quit, or left, or whatever. Then I talked to Lozano. And he told me he was gonna talk to, uh, whoever it was in the electrical department.
Mm-hmm.
Then he sent me an email three weeks later telling me all that I was gonna have to replace it. Basically redesigning my HP, uh, my electric. Now, I understand that there's certain, uh, municipal codes that change from time to time, but they had my project in review for five months. You mean to tell me that nobody ever talked to the electrical department to find out if what we were doing was legal or illegal? Also, in this project, we were supposed to have our own power meters, it was gonna be funny. But we got into a pissing contest between the city and the mall, telling the mall that we couldn't put another power meter in there because the mall has too many meters. Why wasn't this discussed when my plan was introduced? Then I was told I had to change the electrical boxes and the transformer at a cost of twenty-two thousand dollars and two and a half, two and a half months waiting for them to come in from CTP. Because they were the only ones that could get them in a tanky fashion. I've spent over a hundred and forty thousand dollars paying rent while you guys are screwing around. How much money do I have to waste to get this project off the ground? I would really like to know, cause I'm tired of going in circles, and so are a lot of people in this room. We're all commercial contractors, and what we do costs money. And we don't have time to be sitting around waiting. I can get permits in the state of Arizona and New Mexico, in Lubbock, in Houston, in San Antonio, but I'm here screwing around to build a restaurant. I've built eighteen restaurants in twenty years, and I've never had to go through these kind of problems. I would really ask that you guys give.
I'm sorry, can you please just not?
I got it, I got it. If you could just keep your comments, and again, uh, I will get with you right now. Uh, I'll look at, uh, the project. Is there anything, uh, else right now that you need, uh, fixed or that you need to follow up on at this time?
Uh, yeah, I can, when it's available, it's to you.
Okay.
I would like to take.
I'll get with you after the meeting.
I would like to take the information for the three, the three gentlemen that, uh, uh, took the, the, the word right now, uh.
We'll get them, I have a list, uh, we're not going.
Any other question?
And again, we're here, the reason we're here is we're trying to, again, get some feedback. We understand, I understand your frustration, right? And so, again, part of this is, I wanna get and hear the things firsthand so that I can see what we need to focus on as a city to get this resolved. So, just, uh, if you can just please keep your comments, we'll take them. We want your feedback, but just in an operational manner, please.
We have a question on the comments themselves. For example, I have one fish on the fifty-three comments. The comments are, like he said, you forgot to lock this eye, cross this line. Then we focus on a checklist, supposedly, they have a checklist that they're doing. They're asking about the counters. Where in the code does it have anything to do with the cabinets? Are they structured? No, it's cosmetic.
Mm-hmm.
But I was told, you know, building, building, uh, pilots, if a, if a cabinet for missing doors, I wasn't, I wasn't gonna fail the inspection because they're not structural.
The, the code, as you know, the code focuses on life safety, structural things, okay? So, anything that's cosmetic should not be creating issues, but.
And it's not, it's not in the code book, you know?
Right.
It's not in the code. If I put, they want the size and the, and the, the bay. So, I asked them, okay, if I put a three-foot, uh, counter with a, with a two-foot, two-foot line for the pass? Yes. Or if I put it two feet, five inches, cause I only need it for twenty-seven contacts for the pass? Yes. So, why do you hold up my permits for that?
We, we, we get your points, again.
Okay.
And, and part of the thing is to get this, we, I'm hearing it firsthand, so these are the things that I'm gonna be working on.
Thank you.
Uh, I think there was another question here.
Yes, uh, for me, we work on a commercial restaurant. Will be the first time submitting a L-visit here. Um, so, I'm lucky, I have few people. Uh, my question is, the third-party inspection, we do design a bill, is also for commercial? Do we have, that any people know this review, uh, civil or?
Yes.
Yes, awesome.
Yes, yeah.
One more question, again, it's going to be my first time submitting a, on a L. Um, when we submit the bill, then hell department and fire goes to you guys, or we have to submit separately each, uh, department?
Fire department is part of the plant review.
Okay. And hell department?
Hell department is, there is a. Health department is, there is a, a group, I don't know.
The department is not assigned for commercial projects, that will be a separate process.
Yes.
Yes.
I recommend, if, since it's the first time, to take the, the training for A B O. And, uh, so you can get used to the system and ask any questions you may have on that.
Hey, for, for sure, we want you to do that, so I'm gonna add a preliminary meeting.
And I'll, and I'll get you some information, because I'm sure if you work in a restaurant, not only health, but pre strap and all that.
Oh, yeah, that, that is...
That's, that's reviewed by A B O.
That is reviewed by A B O as well. So the only thing would be probably the health department to get your...
And you, how many overtime reviews? A lot of cities they do, like for department, you pay between three hundred to five hundred dollars, uh, for department, for the electrical review, for, uh...
Like expedited review, we don't have that. Yeah, it's just regular.
Five to ten days?
Yes, the regular is five, uh, between five to ten and ten days, but there is no expedited.
A lot of times, uh, you're just missing one department, just upcoming, to be able to get the whole permit. Uh, and waiting in there five to ten days hurts the, the project. Sometimes it's when people weren't willing to pay, you know, I don't know, sometimes, like, situation is three fifty for department.
Like a partial approval?
Uh, the only, the only thing I can think of, the only thing I can think of is getting your foundation permit, and maybe that could, could you...
Yes.
Yeah, to move forward. And then that, that pre development, uh, meeting, right? That could also be something helpful, where you get with the staff, you meet beforehand, and, and that way, when they see it, it should be a smoother process.
Sure.
And I'll get you, I'll get you our contract, uh, firearm sprinkler suppression system, certain permits can become directly. We're part of the commercial building permit process, and we do give the approval, so you get your building permit. But the subcontractor is doing the sprinkler, uh, firearm, stuff like that, it was specifically to fire, not to come to us.
Correct.
And, and scan that care code, that's our website, and I know there's a lot of good info on there too.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any other question for commercial?
On my side, um, I work for a commercial construction company, and my management has given a certificate of occupancy.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, I can stress that we finish, uh, everything that has to do with the final inspections. But in order for us to get any response from the city, just for that review, we're giving between ten, fifteen, twenty, and nobody responds to that.
Well, that's unacceptable, so now I'll go, I'll, I'll go over some of the things, I think they go to my notes, which I'll go at the end of the meeting, and just go through them. Uh, I know they mentioned three, right now I'm at seven, uh, that, that I'm looking at, so, uh, these are things that I'm gonna be, uh, looking at.
Okay, okay, if there is any other question, I just want...
The three o'clock, uh, deadline for inspections. Um, is there any, you know, anything that can be done, if there's not enough, move them in, because you don't get results till four P M. And if it fails, it, you can't put it in until the next day, so you already lost.
Yeah, I think it's more than, uh, it's more the, about the scheduling, right?
Yes, uh, for the inspections, uh, our inspectors, for inspections, our inspectors try to update their status before the four P M. And if not, on the same day, or, yeah.
And also, so like, Brent, I just got results on the three thirty, and so, I mean, it was a matter of, and I'm calling them, it's enough. So I had to wait till, now I think...
I think it's because of the time.
Until the next day.
Because you...
The next day?
No, for the results.
Oh, for the results.
Uh-huh, okay, I can check with Mr. Carganas about that, okay? Yes, sir.
Can I say something?
Okay, so, uh, we're gonna go, uh, with the zoning supervisor, El Galarosco.
Okay, my name is El Galarosco, I'm the supervisor for zoning enforcement division. And the zoning enforcement division, we're in charge of investigating zoning complaints. Uh, but we also are in charge of, uh, three permitting process. The first permitting process is the new business application. So there's, uh, anybody wants to, to open a business, and there's no construction involved, uh, you can fill out a business application form and go through the, uh, pay the fee. And once you pay the fee, we do a several inspections, which is a building inspection, uh, utility department, health department, environmental department, right away division, and fire department. Once, uh, you pass those inspections, um, the business will receive a certificate of occupancy. And this process is mainly for businesses that are not gonna be doing construction. If you're doing construction, you have to go through a different process, which is a building permit. Um, at the zoning enforcement division, we also offer another service, which is the vendor's permits. Uh, we do have several vendor's permits, uh, we do have steezow vendor's permits for Valentine's, Easter, Mother's Day, Father's Day, uh, Halloween. Uh, right now, we are, um, we are issuing those Valentine's vendor's permits, so anybody interested on, on, on selling items for Valentine's, on a pro, private property, on a parking lot at their homes, this is the vendor permit. It's a fifty dollar fee, and you can sell for a whole week, or you can pay, uh, if you wanna sell for more than a week, we also have a six-week permit, which is a hundred dollars if it's on your own property, or five hundred dollars if it's on, uh, somebody else's property. Uh, the third service that zoning enforcement, uh, offers is a home occupation. Um, if you have a, a business at home, a notary service, uh, maybe you're a landscaper, you have a, a business on an office at home, uh, you can apply for a home occupation, you just fill out an application, uh, it's a one-day thing. Uh, fill out the application, sign the application, we do not charge a fee on this, on this, uh, process, but home occupations do have restrictions. Uh, basically, uh, it's only for office only, it's not for, for, um, having a fleet of commercial vehicles at home, or storage, or in a yard. It's mainly for an office.
Hey, take it outside!
Uh, these are the, the, the services that zoning enforcement division offers. Um, next would be Mr., um, Miguel Hernandez for the floodplain permits.
Just a question, all these, all these permits that you have here, uh, they can be, uh, picked up at the counter?
Yes, the new business applications and the home occupation and the vendors, it can be at the counter, or we have them online. Yes.
What's a home occupation?
Uh, for example, you have, uh, you wanna open a small business at home, uh, you can, we only offer home occupation for services. Uh, for example, an office, a notary service, a beauty salon, a daycare, uh, we do not issue home occupations for the mechanic shop at home, or welders, or, no. It's only for, for office services. Um, because we do have zoning ordinances that do not allow businesses to be operated from a residential area, but there's some certain small businesses that we would allow them. And that would be office services mainly. Any other, other question? Okay, Mr. Miguel Hernandez is next.
Good afternoon, my name is Miguel Hernandez, I'm the G I S analyst and slash floodplain manager here. Uh, for everybody, uh, if your property or your project is in the floodplain, you must get a floodplain development permit first. If you don't get one, you will not be able to get a building permit. The first step is always your floodplain permit. After that, you can submit, uh, your application, all required, it depends on the project. What you submit is, uh, your floodplain permit, scope of work, a site plan. If you're gonna build a building in the floodplain, you have to submit three elevation certificates. One on virgin land, the next one will be when you have your, uh, your batter boards up before you pour concrete, and the third one will be after you have your finished floor. So that'll be if you're gonna build a building. Uh, for, if you are gonna do finish outs, if you're gonna, uh, finish out a building, or if you're gonna do a new, a new business with a different sign or whatever, I suggest, when you fill out the floodplain permit, do the scope of work where you're gonna do the, the remodel, and also, if you're gonna add a sign, add it at that time. It'll expedite your application. So like that, you, because if you don't, once you start, once you do your finish out, and you come back with a sign permit, you're gonna have to get another, uh, floodplain application for your sign. So whatever you're gonna do, add it to the first sign plane, uh, uh, floodplain permit, and like that, you're covered for your whole project. You don't have to come back and get another sign, uh, a floodplain permit for your sign, or another sign, uh, permit for knocking down a wall, or whatever. Include it all in one permit, and that way, it'll make your, your, uh, your permit process a lot faster. It'll expedite your permit. And this is with anything, uh, if you're gonna build a parking lot in the floodplain, you have to get a, a floodplain permit. That's pretty much how easy it is. Uh, any questions?
You said, uh, on the finish out?
Well, like, like, say you're gonna build, like, say this building's a, uh, just a shell, because we build shells, right? So say you're gonna do, you're gonna do partitions, like, have three stores. So if you're gonna have that included in your, if you already have it in your plans, that you're gonna include, like, three shops, include it in your plan? Like, they don't have to worry about assigning, uh...
When, when, originally, when that building was built, did they already qualify for, to, to build the finish outs?
No, because sometimes what they'll do is they'll build out the, 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 they'll build out, build out the shell. And then say, a year later, they come back and say, you know what? I wanna subdivide it, and I wanna put a barber shop here, I wanna put a beauty shop on that side.
Normally the, the case.
Uh, yeah, exactly. If you're gonna do that, and you already have, more or less, what you're gonna do, include it in the plan at the beginning, because, or else...
No, but I mean, I'm saying, if, if, if you're going, if you, if you get a permit for a shell, I would assume that you're going to go through this procedure.
For the shell.
For the shell?
Yeah, that's it.
Why do you need to go through it for the finish out?
Because we're dealing with FEMA and FEMA, okay, you have a shell, right? And you build a shell, and you have a fire, uh, I don't know, tornado, whatever, whatever disaster. The, your insurance is only gonna cover your shell. So if you build, like, a jewelry store, and your building gets knocked down, your inventory gets lost. FEMA's not gonna be able to cover that, because it's not documented as a floodplain, uh, permit.
So every construction or any changes to the shell or additions, they have to be recorded, uh...
Remember, we're...
I, I understand, but it should be one of those where it's just a procedural thing, where, okay, the shell's already done, the finish out comes next. You, you're not gonna make, make a shell and not do anything with it. Obviously, the plan is to, uh, do some...
The ordinance, the ordinance says, any construction in the floodplain requires a permit, any construction. So you're gonna be constructing inside.
That's federal, right?
Yeah, that's a federal, I mean, we can't, there's, there's, it's a city ordinance, uh, directed by FEMA, so we have to follow that.
So you have any questions on the permit?
Like, you were gonna do a restaurant in the mall, right?
Of course, well, a restaurant, yes.
Right, so if you're gonna add a, a, uh...
No, you'll include it.
If you're gonna add a, a sign, include it in your flooding permit, because the mall is a floodplain.
Okay.
That'll make your job a lot easier, a lot faster. That's what I recommend to people. I had a lady come in and say, you know what, I wanna do a storage shed in the back of my house, they're in a floodplain. But later on, next year, I'm gonna do a driveway in the front. Add them to the first permit, the permit does not expire unless FEMA comes back and does some channelization, or, or does another study, and either puts it in or takes it out of the floodplain. So what she did, she saved herself two hundred dollars, and she saves herself time not to come to the city radio and require a permit for both. She just required, she just gets that permit and adds both of them in there, easy process.
And we can accept the projects for plan review, but the permit will not be released until the flood permit is completed.
That's correct.
And, and the flood permit is issued. Okay.
Any other questions? So, yeah.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Sandy De Guayada, I'm the senior office assistant at the building department. Um, I'm gonna be speaking about the A V Ps, which is, we're kinda going to form a panel. The subcontractor or the authorized agent, um, must put out an application, they can submit it in person, or via email, to the building permits email. Um, the application is, is processed in the order that it was received, right? So like, if you're in line, you know, when you're next is when it's processed, same thing happens through email. Um, the payment is that we accept a sort of click to go portal, we can send you a link to it, if you, if you process the application through email, um, or if you give us a call and you tell us, hey, I wanna pay online, can you send me the link, we're gonna send it to you. We also accept the check, money order, or debit card card forms in person, right? We don't accept any payments via the phone, it's through the click, the clicks go. Um, if you do pay for the permit online, we do need to be notified, so you have to send us an email, or you can give us a call. You don't have to necessarily send us the receipt, maybe just an email saying, hey, I already paid for this permit, can you please send it to me? And with that information, we'll go ahead and send you an email with the digital permit and receipt. Um, over the counter, we also issue out the residential re-roof permits, which can be issued to the general contractor or to the owner. General contractor does have to be registered with us, obviously, we do ask for the requirements, application, I D, uh, registration fee for the general contractor. Um, we, we do require the application to be filled out, the stories submitted, the quote of material for the re-roofs. Uh, we do have to be, uh, specify that it's residential, over the counter does not apply to commercial. Uh, the solar panel permits for commercial residential, they do require the building permit, the electrical permit, and then, of course, you have to submit the site plan, the diagram, and specification sheets, and then the installation manuals, which that is voted over to the residential or commercial for review. Once they review the documents in the application, then the, we'll go ahead and generate the permit number, the fee, so you guys can go and pay for it. Uh, we also handle the garage sales upfront, they can be applied for either in person, or via email, or you can also do it yourself through the click to go portal. Um, in person, we ask just for the I D, um, it says utility bill, but of course, if you don't have the utility bill, then we can work with just the I D. Uh, the form payment with that would be strictly with the money order or the debit card card, and it's just fifty dollars. You can contact garage sale for about, uh, it's five times a year, there's no restrictions in between the garage sale permits, so, um, that's about it. Is there any questions?
If, if you're including the solar panel, uh, questions on the new building, it has to be a separate permit?
Yes, it's a, it's a separate building permit, because it, it requires, uh, separate inspections. That way, it doesn't affect your certificate of occupancy. So to have a separate permit number, and a general contractor can also, the electrical contractors usually, before, it was just an electrical permit that was issued for the solar panels. Um, but now, since they have to submit, like, the site plan of where they're doing the installation of the solar panels, because sometimes they'll install it on the roof, or sometimes they'll install it on a, on a freestanding pergola.
If you submit plans for new building that includes a solar panel system, it would include all of those things in the plan?
Right, right, the, the solar panel installation would require a separate permit, um, be, because of the inspections. We don't want that, those inspections to hold you back from any inspections that should require for the CO.
Part of the, of the building is inspected by, you know, by, by an electrical inspector.
The inspector, yes. And, and it all goes down to the inspections that it requires, because we don't want that to affect your certificate of occupancy, just because you're missing an inspection for the solar panel. It's given separately. And usually, like I said, the electrical contractors would be the ones to pull the permit, and it was just the electrical, but now, since we have to have them submit the building permit, now they're registering as general contractors, so the electrical contractors are also registered as general contractors. They're the ones who are taking responsibility for the solar panel installation permits. Is there any other questions? I wanted, I wanted to mention that when you call in through the automated line and you click on any option, it's very important for you guys to click pound to leave a voicemail, because if you don't press pound, we don't get the voicemail, we don't give you a call back, uh, in the timeframe that it states there. Yes. Yes, correct. Was there any other question?
Yes, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, so as you know, the, the building department offers, uh, T C Os. Um, this option is, uh, temporary certificate of... Um, this option is, uh, temporary certificate of occupancy. And, uh, that's up to the department approval and our approval. So just make sure that whenever, uh, the application is submitted, uh, it gets emailed to BLDCOO, um, and then we're gonna process your, uh, application. Um, remember that for TCO, uh, the mechanical inspections have to be fully approved, and the building and fire inspections can be partially approved. So it's very important, remember to schedule your inspections before three P.M. Help us to help you, okay? So, uh, the TCO issuance, um, it will be, uh, under the business. Just, uh, make sure that whenever you want a TCO, that all the information is complete, uh, that, um, the application, uh, matches with the name of the business. Sometimes, uh, we get corrections, like, oh, it was in this company, it was another one. So just make sure to, uh, coordinate internally, just to have the information correct, uh, for your TCO, and same for the CO. Okay, uh, one of our missions in the building department is, uh, to commit the safety of our community. So we're, uh, implementing, starting March the first, just to make a reference of the geotechnical report for the residential projects. Our concern is that we have received, uh, some complaints of, uh, from some, uh, from, from, from some people, uh, that their houses are maybe cracking, or sometimes their, uh, soil is with clay, or, uh... So we just want to make sure that all the, the projects are with a geotechnical report, and, uh, as far as you submit the, this document, uh, from the developer, that's okay. Just make a reference in the foundation plan, so we can, um, make sure that the people that is investing in their home, they have a safe place to live. Okay, so here, we're just, um, can you please go back? I'm just referencing the sections, uh, from the residential code, where, uh, we are requesting this, um, documentation, and, uh, you don't need just to upload it, um, for each house, but at least make the reference from the geotechnical report and the company. Um, then, uh, well, uh, our, uh, recommendation is to call before you buy or sign a contract. Uh, it's very sad for us to hear or see our customers that they are, with the application, they already did the investment of purchasing a property, or starting, uh, with the lease payments, and then it's not approved because of the zoning, or because they don't comply with setbacks. So we are more than welcome to call our planning department and ask if they have any questions about the used zone, if it's allowed or not, or if you have questions about any other requirement before proceeding, before signing a contract, uh, you, uh, you can schedule preliminary meetings, you can, uh, just walk in, or do, uh, also schedule the pre-construction development, uh, meetings with all the divisions as required. And, um, just to improve, our director, Ms. Guerra, and also with, uh, with our commercial staff, to get a revised, uh, an amendment for the assigned ordinance, so you will hear from us soon. We're also working on the industrial parking lot ordinance, and, uh, that will also improve and expedite our process to give you more options for the parking lots, so you don't have to be, um, uh, to have some other options, just not the asphalt or concrete, and then just to, uh, improve our service, okay? So thank you for your time and for coming, we're always here to hear you in our office, you're more than welcome. And, uh, I don't know if you have any other questions, or more complaints, or something good to say? But, uh, believe us, we try our best.
Thank you for having this town hall meeting, I mean, these are needed, to be able to communicate. Um, do you know if they're going to get a building director, that's only gonna be building, and a planning director, it's only getting planning? Because having one person take care of both departments, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Yeah, for right now, uh, we have Ms. Vanessa Guerra for both divisions, and nothing has been decided on having the divisions separate again. But, um, I'll contact Mr. Chavez and let him know your concerns, and, uh, oh, he's here. Uh, Mr. Chavez, there, we're asking for you.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Navarro is asking, uh, if, have we considered to go back to have a building director and planning director instead of just one?
I mean, it's very overwhelming, to, you know, you weren't building director. To have him do both departments, that's not good for the city as fast as it's growing.
So right now, we have the plan director, and right now, there's, uh, if you go, well, at, at least one right now, but there's gonna be two assistant directors, one for building and one for plan. Right, mm-hmm, and they should be, I know that...
They're both open right now.
They're both, okay, I was gonna say, they're both open right now. I was gonna go and check online, because they promised me that it was gonna be yesterday when they were gonna post it. So they're posted, mm-hmm.
Okay, well...
Anything else?
No, that's all, well, there's our contact information, uh, you know, our email addresses, and, uh, remember to press a pound whenever you leave a message, to schedule your inspections, uh, before three, and, uh, to visit our office for any questions or concerns. So thank you for coming, and your time.